Hi, good evening. I'd like to call the Tamamo Planning Board meeting to order. Before we get rolling, if you have electronic devices, please silence them or turn them off. And I'd like to start with the applicant pledges. Let's lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Adopt from minutes of our previous session. Entain a motion to adopt those minutes, if any corrections or emissions are anything necessary. Motion for those to be adopted, a second?
One second.
Okay, we got double seconds. She got the second.
You need first. Thank you, David.
David. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. Correspondence, I received a copy of the most current talk to the towns. If anybody would like that, to peruse it, let me know and I'll pass it along to you. Other than that, we're ready to go with the public hearing for a good data twelve lot subdivision. John, thank you. Do you want to sign your sheet out for that, Linda?
Are you?
Do we have a signing?
It's up there.
If you're here to speak on this project, we would ask that you sign your name in at the table prior to this getting started. Have you received the green cards, Linda?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It's up there. When your turn comes.
Okay. Sorry, thought you were ahead of time. Now, when you're preaching voting, make sure you put your name down there. Thank you. Okay, John?
If I may, I'll address the public. My name is John Fuller. I'm a professional engineer that's representing the applicant. That's before the public tonight for a public hearing on this particular parcel, which is approximately thirty-seven acres. It's bounded by Guymar Turnpike. It backs up to what we call Cedar Lane and extension off of Heather Lane. There's a major power line that goes through the center of it and it has a little bit of frontage onto Homestead Lane. We've been working this property for several years. We looked, among other things, potential to tie into the sewer in the Hidden Valley District as well as the water system. But due to a number of circumstances, we ended up pursuing this subdivision strictly as individual wells and septics. So we went through multiple configurations with the board. Settled on this current orientation, which is a proposed twelve lot subdivision. It'll involve two cul-de-sac roads, one coming off of Guymar Turnpike into five lots into a current field that's along that road frontage. And the other proposal is to do a seven lot cul-de-sac off of the existing Cedar Lane coming off of Heather Lane in the Hidden Valley area. Again, all these lots will be served by individual wells and septics. The roads will be dedicated to the town at a later time. They'll certainly have to be designed to town road spec, specifications and standards. Due to the nature of the subdivision, it will require Department of Health review and approval because of the sanitary conditions with wells and septic. So that's another component of this. The Orange County DPW has given us conceptual approval on the entrance off of Guymar Turnpike for that roadway cut. And other than that, we obviously had a number of comments that the board and its consultants have had over the last couple of years as it relates to this property. And we believe we've addressed many of the technical or what we call engineering considerations and it's before the public now for comments. So we'd wait and turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this applicant's project before us? If so, one at a time come to the podium. Sign in for us, please, and then state your name for the record and give us a room for, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, good evening. My name is Matt Kleeman. My wife and I, Rhonda, live on Cedar Lane, the only house on Cedar Lane at this present time. When we bought this house four years ago, the selling point was the dead end and the privacy that the woods provide. Of course, our concern would be what would happen to our privacy if this development was to go forward. Obviously, the traffic that would be going through Cedar. We do have a school bus stop directly across the street from our house and, of course, our concern would be the children in that matter. And forgive me, I'm all new to this, I'm probably late to the game of this, but there's a lot of other concerns that we have come up with. And I have printed them out. See, I printed them out and if it's okay, if I can address them to you, give them to you. And we would like to have these responses in a written format, if that's possible. So, with that being said, you know, of course, our concern is, another concern of ours is the
The construction part of it.
How is this going to impact us? Because I know the other houses off behind Heather and I believe it was, was the other road?
Where do you want?
Homestead. Will be affected, but it just seems like Cedar Lane and our house will be affected the most because of the construction. And we want to know what preventative measures are going to be taken so we're not disrupted to our, you know. Also, will there be loss of property value to our house, to our home? That's another concern that we have. Again, those questions are all outlined in the document that I provided you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Can we read through that? Thank you. Anyone else?
One of the big concerns I just, now that I'm actually seeing this map, so there is no true way back to the other cul-de-sac and not like that. Is there going to be clearance of the land?
So, as part of this design, so yes, there was some prior iterations where we showed a road actually going through all the way. That was an earlier version. Part of the nature of this was to limit the amount of total disturbance. And so it actually classifies under the ordinance as a conservation subdivision, which will, the way we laid it out and designed it is to minimize the amount of what I'll call land disturbance or clearance, you know, to try to preserve the majority of what I'll call the forestry that works through the center of the property.
So, one of our big, our Hidden Valley is a runoff that comes through that property onto Heather Lane. When it rains heavily, it's at least two to three inches of water, literally coming down Cedar Lane and into the homes in the back that are on Heather right now. A lot of them have swells that they put in to control that. With the clearance of some of this property, I would think there's going to be more water runoff with that. Is there a plan for that in place or?
John, is that handled with the SWIFT process?
So, yes, as with all these types of developments, we have to do a stormwater pollution prevention plan, which involves stormwater controls or measures in order to manage that increase in runoff that you're alluding to. What I can tell you is that the design of the site, without getting too technical, the high point is the current threshold of Cedar Lane before it becomes forestry. So the way we've designed the new road is to slope away from that area so none of that water will actually go down Cedar Lane. It'll be controlled on the existing property and then diverted to stormwater ponds. So none of that water that, as part of this clearing and development, will make its way into the existing
Where will the water go?
There's a pond proposed over here.
Is that part of the stream that's going through there?
It's not part of the stream, no.
Okay.
That's completely independent of that. And that's actually a good point. And we've had all the wetlands flagged and any water bodies have been identified as part of this engineering. No, we're going to create an onsite pond to control all the water and that will discharge onto the existing
Is this the pond here?
This lower part here, yeah.
But the stream does run through there. I believe it comes back out over here somewhere.
Yeah.
It crosses that pond.
Yeah, so we'll control the water and then, you know, the standard requires us to, whatever it was for construction, we have to be less than that. And so anything that we release will be less than that. I can tell you the way a lot of these ponds are designed, they almost never release water due to what we call the one or two or three year storms.
Well, if the stream is crossing through that, because that stream does back up and runs slower than it probably should.
Yeah, it does.
So that's something that I would ask, you know, maybe during the construction or maybe they could do this beforehand, see where the flow of that water is from that stream if the water doesn't come into that pond area.
I'm sure that that will be properly, as you mentioned, that that's part of the planning process. I'll help you look at it through the schedule process.
So, most of these homes then will not be getting the excess of water off of that land? Pretty much, there is an excess amount of water.
Yeah, what I'm indicating to you, Guy, is we have a stormwater plan to collect any water that's generated.
The stormwater is going to be in the cul-de-sac, right?
Yeah, yeah, that water off the road.
But I'm talking about the land itself. You have homes that are here?
Yeah.
The water that's coming off this land now?
Well, yeah, our development will intercept all that water and divert it away from this pond. Yeah, our development will collect that water and divert it away.
John, I can see where the houses are from. Are those the A, B, C, D, E along the
Yes, he's referring to these.
And the stormwater prevention plan.
Collects it and dverts it out of here. That's what we're doing. This water here is
Runs this way.
We're going to collect it and divert it this way. Yep.
One of the big things was the reason about the water coming off that property, because it runs pretty much into Heather Lane where our sewers are running right now. And we've already had abundance of water that has gone into the sewer plant through that. I actually filmed, like, you know, the water coming off Cedar, coming down Heather, you know, and it's all coming from that plant. I know certain homeowners there, they have like swells that they built with their backyard to alleviate the water from getting into their house. So that's a major concern for the residents there.
Yeah, I think just for the benefit of the board, he's referring to these homes here. And so as part of this, we are collecting all the water here and diverting it to a proposed pond to get the water away from those homes.
And it won't be affecting the flow on Cedar Lane as present?
No.
So whatever you're experiencing there is going to be there.
I hope, I hope. We all know how construction goes, so, you know, I'm hoping.
They're not changing, they're adding to Cedar Lane according to the plan, is that right? You're not reconstructing all Cedar Lane and adding to the existing roadway?
Picking up the existing roadway and bringing it into the property.
But what you're creating, the diversion to the retention pond, will that help the runoff that's coming down Cedar Lane currently?
That'll help the runoff that they're currently experiencing from this property, yes.
How far away is that pond from that stream, do you know?
I don't have an exact dimension, but it's a pretty good distance.
And your pond doesn't affect the stream at all?
Not at all. No, we're required, and I've told this to the board and the publics, we're required to design around the hundred year storm, so, which is obviously the maximum event. And so our ponds generally work very well and they never, they never release water.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Kathy Krasaki-Rixon and I live at 31 Homestead and I have a lot of questions. My property borders two sides of this new development. I would like to know what type of impact I'm going to have. And secondly, how come I didn't find out about this? I lived there for six years until I got a certified letter in the name.
Well, this has been a project, I think we've had you, most of four years, John?
Yes, yep.
So, I live here six years, how come this is the first time I'm hearing of it with a certified letter?
Yeah, I told everybody, honestly, they're new about it, because we've had a couple of meetings that have been quite well attended and didn't require any notification publicly from the board. Alex, is there anything that you could?
Well, I don't know what happened there, because I wasn't here.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just going to leave that out there. I'm not happy about just finding out about it at this
So I know the agendas are publicly posted, Paul, they come up every month for the county planning board, the CPA?
If you're not looking for something or the type of job that I do, I do a lot of traveling, I don't look for this, so I'm just, I'm just saying.
Okay. We hear you. I know there's quite a bit that, you know, has been out in the
I think
social media, I guess would be, and, you know, we've had regular meetings with this particular applicant for a number of years now, so.
Well, like I said, there's, I have a lot of skin in the game on this considering where my property sits and how my property is going to end up being in the middle or almost in the middle of a new development. So does that mean that my property now becomes part of that development?
No.
Are you sure?
Well.
Because the other houses that are being built there, they're back, the way this looks, their backyard is right on my backyard. I am going to be looking into those homes.
Oh, well, that may be something that, there's maybe a site distance that may be there, but it's not going to become Hidden Valley East or anything like that. It's not, basically, it's a, we're down to twelve new subdivision lots being put on that parcel that is
Did you see the two houses on the corner that were just recently put in, how they were built and how the one house is looking right into the other house?
I'm not sure where you're referencing.
That's on the corner of Guymar and Finchville. The one house is still for sale, the other house is sold. I feel so bad for the house that
Yes, that went through
So I don't want it, I don't want
Subdivision process here sometime in the prior to that?
Well, I'm just giving some examples here of what's all being built up around. I bought the house for the view, for the privacy. I also have concerns about the construction, because when they were building up on Homestead, they were starting at six o'clock in the morning. Are they going to do that type of work too here?
That would be something, I guess, we address through the town, through the
I could come to my office.
Police Department or Building Department.
My property has protected wetlands. Has an environmental impact study been done on the property?
I believe the wetlands have been fully delineated, John?
Yes, they have.
So isn't any plan for anything to disturb the wetlands?
Okay, there's the pond that's right on the corner, so is that going to still stay there or is that going to be used as part of this development? Because you're talking about ponds for runoff.
The pond is existing and will remain and we are not using it for stormwater runoff.
Okay, and development, the roads. I have a very large property line on this development. Are roads going to be approaching near my property?
Will be nowhere near your property line.
Did you say your last name was Krasaki?
Rixon, Krasaki-Rixon, correct. What about the zoning? Because my property right now is zoned residential agriculture. Is that going to change or will that remain the same? And what will the impact to my taxes?
Hidden Valley, I think, is SR one, I believe?
This property is SR one.
Right.
Yes.
That is what yours should be, I believe, if you're in Hidden Valley. Are you in Hidden Valley?
She's not.
I am not. That's why I'm asking these questions, because I'm going to be right there.
For the benefit of the board, just so you know where she's at, it says property right here.
Yeah, it's very close.
It says property right here, I suppose she's referring to.
Okay.
Talking to the grand house on the hill.
Correct. I think that's, I think that's good. I just, and the taxes also, what impact will that be, the taxes?
That'd be a question for the assessor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Mary Harvard. So I have some questions about that stormwater plan. So where is, like, it's going to, the property here is in this, is going to come over to here, for instance?
Yeah, so what we've done is designed to collect the water around the development and divert it along this property line to a pond down here.
And where is the, the sewer plant provisioned to this?
It's over here.
So that won't have any effect?
It will have no impact on the sewer.
One hundred percent?
No, it'll have no impact at all.
And if it does, if something happens?
There's no way with the engineering and the review that we've gone through that our stormwater will have any impact on the sewer tree, on whatsoever.
Okay. Could you explain a little bit more about the jurisdictional determination? Can you talk about it a little bit in June?
So, this year, the New York State DEC passed a regulation which requires all wetlands to be submitted for what we call a parcel JD, which is a partial jurisdictional determination. And what happens is, the DEC up until this year had prior, previously delineated what they had governments over, or, you know, what we considered state wetlands. Under the new law, we have to have every property submitted to the DEC so that they have an opportunity to review if the wetlands have value to the state. And then if they do, then it sets forth a course of action where if they say there's no impact, there's no impact. So that's what the current JD is, jurisdictional determination.
In the June meeting, you've mentioned that perhaps because you had an existing application that this project wouldn't be subject to that, is that?
So, the DEC gives weight to projects that had been submitted prior to the adoption of the new policy, so if the application was pre-existing, like prior to 2025, they do give benefit to those projects. You still have to go through the process, but it does give benefit to those projects.
Benefit in what way?
Well, I mean, if you've already had a submitted application or conceptual approval, then as it relates to the eventual permitting that's required, that they would give weight to them.
You mean they would require it?
Possibly, or they may require it or just grant, make it a condition of a permit.
Who decides that, is it this board?
No, it's New York State DEC.
Okay. Because that would have to do with how far up you could build. I know in that June meeting you mentioned there are parts that already are encroaching on the buffer.
So typically, what happens with state wetlands is they need to be delineated, that needs to be validated by the state. And then historically, the state has required a one hundred foot buffer from those wetlands to protect them.
Right.
You know, that's what we call the hundred foot buffer. There's always been the possibility and the opportunity to submit what's called a buffer permit where you can approach within that hundred feet, you know, but that's a permitting process that you go through, yes. So that is something that has always been the case.
Okay. And did you mention also that there is some portion of it that you would have already do?
Well, the the entrance to Guymar Turnpike, that proposed roadway, involves impacting wetlands, which not only involves getting a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, but also a joint permit with the state. That was always going to be the case.
Okay, that was what I thought.
Yeah.
And so my other question really to the board is that I would ask to that, we have a public hearing obviously this evening, but that you would extend that public hearing for another month. It's summer, there's not a lot of people around who, sometimes, the way we often get things, you know, we get more information from social media than the legal aspect of it, but I know that there was a lot of written questions, so I would ask that perhaps you would extend this hearing to try at least another month?
We'll discuss that.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this project? One more request for anybody wanting to be heard? Hearing done, entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So that means if we close it, we can extend it, correct?
Okay, let's change that motion to discussion to close and Alex, can you help us out with that before we continue?
Well, you can close the discussion for tonight, it's up to the board, do you want to extend the hearing for, you know, a different time for you?
Okay, and as I understand this project, at this point is preliminary stage. If we will require another public hearing once Health Department makes their determinations?
It's up to you. So, yeah, I mean, I agree with Mr. Smith, you can do another public hearing prior to final. It's not common though. I mean, usually you have a public hearing for preliminary and then you grant preliminary approval. As I've indicated to the board on this and other projects, at that point, it's preliminary. We have to go to the Health Department and address all of their concerns, comments, questions, engineering, which is probably going to take the better part of a year at least, prior to getting Health Department approval to bring this back before the board for final. But to Mr. Smith's point, you could require another public hearing at that time.
So, the board wishes?
I'd like to extend it.
Okay, continuation of public hearing until next month.
Okay, I have a question from Alex, I guess. Does the applicant have to resend all the notices?
No, if we continue the public hearing to next month, there's not a requirement for renotification.
Do you have to notify it in the paper?
No. No, it's already been made.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. So who made the motion to extend it?
I do.
Second. Okay. Thank you. Those in favor? Any opposed? Good, that's Carrie. We'll pick this up next month at our regular session in September, April.
I did not. I was going to ask if I can get coffee.
You can have this one.
I have another one for you.
I have another one, all right. Thank you. Before we move on, anything from the issue that we would like to review and then we shift over to, I don't know if he has anything.
Hi, Greena Lee from T and D Engineers, here on behalf of Jason. We had a few comments, one of them regarding the drainage district to be established and the applicant had requested clarification on that. We think that if the applicant provides a letter describing the drainage district, that would be enough. As well as the parcel JD, I know you guys had submitted that. If you could provide updates on that, that would be great when you get, when you hear back from the DEC. We had a few SWIFT comments as well, mostly relating to the bio retention areas. And also witness soil testing may be required by our office to support the use of the bio retention areas, so you can contact our office and schedule that. And then as mentioned before, we need outside ABC approval from the DOH and the DEC, as well as the Orange County Department of Public Works permit for the driveway. So that was it.
Thank you. Alex, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. We'll see you again next year. Thank you, John. The next up will be, uh, Paul Bard and, uh, Hasemeyer, application.
Yeah, my name is Robert Hasemeyer, it's about a whole, whole work. I'm trying to build a house at fifteen twenty four, move to eleven west. There's a existing house there now. It's zone straight commercial. So that's, I think last month, the town board put in a local wall in effect for the planning board to make the final, uh, approval on our plans. I had two sets, it was pretty much two parts. Uh, first will be a lot line change. We're trying to get over an acre, right now it's just under an acre. I'm not sure what you guys have, both set of plans over there. If not, I have more, this should be two. One from the, we didn't, which is the survey, and one from Fusco. If not, we have some more copies. Just for the lot line change.
Mr. Fusco need the lot line too? Or Mr. Reed?
We didn't did the lot line change.
Okay.
And Fusco did the, uh, site plan, septic, so.
Okay, so Mr. Fusco, so, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what did the town board do?
They, last month they put a, actually we got the, the Paul and, or Alex, who, they had a new local wall.
Right, I drafted the local law and I believe it was adopted basically as I, as I drafted.
They changed the local law? So you made a amendment, or they changed the local law, what did they do?
It's a new local law.
A new local law?
It basically gives, gives the planning board a power it has in a number of jurisdictions, Middletown included. It's been very successful. It, it gives the planning board the authority to extend a non-conforming use. And the discretion the board has is, is pretty wide. Um, you, you become in sense, not just a planning board granting a special use for it, but also in, in some senses, you're a, you're a Z B A because you know that this particular thing that you're extending is a non-conforming use. So your, your concern is obviously to, to mitigate or deny the application if there's a unwarranted or, um, insurmountable in your opinion, effect on the neighbors. So you become a sort of a Z B A and a planning board at the same time. But it's had great success in other areas, we've never had a problem in Middletown. I don't, I don't remember any situation where we've had any serious quarrel with neighbors about, you know, this kind of thing. It's, it's basically to approve an extension that doesn't affect anybody, uh, to violate the sense of the zoning law as, as it was there.
So we're, we're dipping our feet in water with this as being our inaugural.
This is your first one?
Yeah. We're special.
We should probably have a copy of that before we, oh, okay, in their file.
Yeah.
Everybody understand what, uh, this process was outlined by Alex?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so the first, it's pretty much two sets, two applications to be filed for the planning board. Uh, the first will be trying to get an okay for a lot line change. Pretty much.
So you're gonna, you're gonna combine the two lots, is that what you have?
Uh, do you have the?
I have it, I see a property line being deleted.
Oh. This is, uh, this is the, I have more copies. So right now, this is the lot. And then this lot here, this L shape, is over by my bottom wall, he owns this property here too. So what we're trying to do is give, he wants to take his property line and the other lot straight from, to that. So it gives us.
Eliminate the middle.
No, delete that.
Correct, eliminate that line.
Just extends you back.
Extend us back, yes.
Okay.
So that's, that's all he's doing, he's taking half acre or whatever it is off of his prop, this lot property fifteen sixteen, you know, to fifteen twenty four, to give us the acre, which will be about an acre and almost a half.
Those two acres here.
Yeah, it'll be like two acres on the one lot, and he's gonna take a half an acre to give it to the other.
Sorry to be so simple.
No, it's not, it's not, that, that doesn't have this piece.
Okay, I got more copies.
Right now, it's a lot line, it's a, it's a bar, it's a, it's a property, and from here, crap, here.
So this is part of, this is part of this lot?
Yes.
Or just doing a figure, this one?
Yeah, so it's just making it for that, to give this an extra half acre. So, have you guys, okay.
All right, I think everybody understands, uh, engineering notes that you have, let me check for us.
So, um, this project will require G M L two thirty nine review as mentioned in our letter, letter. Um, and a use variance will no longer be needed, I've already, because of the new local law. Um, we may need a area variance, but we'll need to see a complete set of plans to confirm that. Um, and then the applicant shall submit an application form as well as E A F. And witness soil testing regarding the septic shall be required. And then we had a few septic design comments, other minor plant comments, but nothing major.
Okay, and Alex, is this something that will transact simultaneously or do we, as far as whether, um, when we approve the two sections if we get to that point, is it?
Cause I have a, I have a question, man, cause Mr. Bard owns both properties right now. So somehow, Alex, they have to get transferred over to Mr. Hasemeyer, right? Ownership, ownership.
Which we're doing that, but we need to get the lot line change first where we can get everything instead of doing ten different things in the county.
Well, you're doing ten different things to us right now, which is very confusing. So I have two different files going, I have a file for you, but I shouldn't have a file for you, cause you don't own anything.
Which, I, okay, I, but the applications are both in his name right now.
Right.
So I'm just talking about the projects, I know more about the project.
The map is in your name.
The one map is and the other one is not.
But the map that has the house on is in your name.
Okay.
But you don't own that. He does. Correct?
Yes, cause we're trying to get the lot line changes over for we can get it changed to my name, where we can move the process along. So we're trying, the old lawyers, we're trying to get everything.
I understand what you're trying to do, so.
Because this has been going on for over a year now, trying to build a house.
Well, it hasn't been in our office for years.
All right. So no one can give us an answer on what needed to be done.
Well, wait a minute, you had an answer.
We did.
In the old zoning law, you had an answer you didn't like.
No, it has nothing to do with that.
No, no. You had an answer that would, would not have allowed you to do this. So the town created an answer for you.
Right.
Okay?
The initial, before all that.
Please.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. But when we submit the paperwork to the county, it's gonna go in under Mr. Bard's name, not, you're not gonna be involved anyplace.
Okay, so like, just do the one, we, we need to get the lot line done and then we'll just, I'll come back and submit everything again.
It's done, it was a legal transaction of property from one end to the other, correct?
Well, it depends on when they do it.
Yeah. Sounds like he wants to wait and have it done after they see this through, uh, this. And my question was, do we act simultaneously on the two, cause there's one action of us regarding the new local law. And the other action, uh, which was just for the lot line change.
It, it's up to you, it can't hurt, I don't think, to do it simultaneously.
Okay, then that's a, so, so, um, there's some notifications that have to go out and be made, uh, there's some notes that if you didn't get them, we'll provide them to you to further the process. If you have questions, speak with, um, Engineering Department. I don't know if there's anything legal, if you need more reference on Alex to help you there. And then, um, come back in with some more complete maps and, uh, get all the names the same on everything, so, they all match up. Anything else we need?
So, question, if my lawyer, if I call my lawyer tomorrow and tell him to put their name on that property as of tomorrow, which he will do, cause he's been calling me six times a week, um, we're okay in this room right now?
I guess as long as everything's consistent.
Right, I mean, where our own, the property's name ought to be on the map, as simple as that.
Yeah, typically we would sub division or an application like this, put it in the, property owner's name, that is done, so, not the perspective of property owners, uh.
That's fine.
Okay. Like, keep in mind there are submission dates and, just a moment, we can, can add the agenda for next month, so we can go further. Is there enough there for two thirty nine to be circulated?
I guess, yeah.
Okay. And that's something that, uh, you just, all right, you should note that, please, thank you.
If you guys need the maps changed to somebody's name, I was the one that drew the plans for Fusco, so just give me a call, I could make whatever name change need so that it all, you know, jives with your application that's upon the board. If that makes it easier for anybody.
Just, just, can we get the lot line change? Um, cause that's actually in Paul's name, and he's the one submitted that, I submitted for the site line.
After we were talking about.
That has to be, no, that has to be recorded in the county.
Yeah, we can't do anything right at this point, but whatever you do going forward, make sure everything is reflective of one name of the applicant. And I would think for continuity's sake, if it's in Paul's name, Paul Bard's name for now, then you can worry about, once it's done, on your end, maybe we have to transfer it, however you wish to handle that with your attorneys. That won't affect anything that you're seeking a way of approval of the lot line change or the acceptance of the new town, uh, law.
Can we get a list of what we need to make everybody happy in this room?
I have another.
We have a.
Yes. Well, so we have it yet, but there's more to be done to bring back to us to work on. And G M L has to be circulated.
So we can't touch the house, we can't do anything with the house at this point?
No.
I would think not, there's more building department thing, but.
Carrie.
All right, thank you. Review, subdivision.
Have your septic right here.
I know. I feel like going like this, right?
Just the first, is your first time in for you with this one?
Yes, it is.
In a few.
So, we have a large parcel of land, um, spans both, uh, the town of Bamakaden and the town of Mount Hope. Town line comes right, right through this area, right through here. So what we're looking at is a, uh, five lot subdivision. Uh, there's a house, uh, up, up here on the hillside here, uh, that we wanna preserve and we wanna, uh, also, the lot will have, uh, the driveway that s, comes up, snakes on, up, up the road to the house here. Uh, we're creating four new residential lots, one, two, three, and the fourth one. So that's, that's what we're looking at, I do have a, a blow up and you guys, I know you all have it, uh, on your desk.
Yeah. You got one?
I got one here.
All right, we're good. Okay, I got one for you if you need it.
You got one here.
You got? Okay, here you go.
Scott, where's most of the property now, what's on the other page?
Uh, the property is, uh, Mount Hope and Bamakaden, so this is, this is the county line right here.
Okay.
And it comes down to this, uh, the county line comes down to this property line and, uh, down to the road and that way. And this, and, and that was a interesting, uh, part of the subdivision, uh, uh, was determining where that line was, uh, the neighbor's line. Uh, Hisdi had pushed it way up on the hill and I had called over to the county and talked to, uh, uh, County, uh, Mike Brethenberg, I think, there. And he says, oh, we have the whole survey of that, he wanted to send it to me. So we ended up, uh, getting the survey and CAD from the county and, uh, we sent our G, GPS fellow out there and tied in over twenty thousand feet for one inch. Uh, that's how good the monuments were set. So that was, uh, very interesting for me to, uh, be part of that. I would have liked to have surveyed that whole line, but, um, and, and it moved. Uh, there was an agreement between the county and the line actually shifted, uh, by hundreds of feet. I actually had the line, uh, more over here and, uh, I was pressed for time to get it into you, but it all worked out. Um, so, uh, we do have to go through, uh, soils testing with, uh, Lena's office. Um, we're gonna schedule that soon. Um, so if you guys, uh, you know, allow us to move forward with this current configuration. Uh, you can see, uh, lot number five, um, basically follows twenty-five feet off center line of the road up to, uh, Todd's house there. Just to preserve that for, for the house parcel. And, uh, we, we have to go through, of course, two thirty nine M review because we're on the county highway. We also will be submitting to the D P W, uh, for their approval of, of the driveway entrances.
Are you submitting anything to Bamakaden?
I, I don't.
I mean, aside from two thirty nine, it does mean, do you require any approvals from the town planning board or? I mean, aside from two thirty-nine, it does make, do you require any approvals from the town planning board or?
I don't, I, I don't believe I require any approvals because, and I, I have to honestly look at lot number five there. I am acquiring a sliver of land that's in the town of Mamakating. But that may change. I might not have to do that. I'll, I'll look at that because if Mr. Smith is right, may, maybe that would need Mamakating approval and. Honestly, if I could avoid that, I certainly will. The cost of the expense, the review, just, it's not worth it.
So the new lots you're creating are mostly in the town of Mount Hope?
Yes, mostly, yes. All except for a sliver of this lot.
This is part of the lot.
Yeah.
So why don't you just change that line so it just incorporates Orange County?
Um, I will probably, you will see that modification next time I come in front of you.
If you're smart.
Yeah, I'll try to be. Also, we'll be looking for lot to depth ratio. Variance or approval from the planning board for, for the lot to depth.
I know that is on the hillside of the road, proposed lots are then to be proposed developments in lesser of the incline, not so steepened area or?
Yes, it's.
Is it gonna be problematic with the driveway?
No, it's, it's actually, um, you know, once, once you get into the lot, it, it, it's not, the slope is not that great. It's actually coming off the road that there's a rise there that we're overcoming with some grading. We're trying to keep all the, we are keeping all the grading on each lot, so we don't have easements crossing back and forth.
What road is this off of?
Uh, Old Mountain Road. Yeah, right, right at the border of Solomon County, Orange County. I believe the sign's like right here, welcome to Sullivan County.
So there is an existing home down in front to the Otisville side of this proposed.
Yes, Harringtons. I, I'll actually, on the next mission, I, I will show their house.
I see on this right here, we should, a, exist well.
We do, and if you look at page two, I accidentally left up a triangle shown there. And, and that is, um, right here, this triangle. And this is, this is me proving to myself that that well is.
Distance is where.
That distance is where. I'll make that disappear on the next mission.
Well, it was cheater line, so that's good.
Yeah.
Any questions from anybody? As you were able to maintain the town code frontage for each of those lots, one, two, and three?
Yes.
And the other ones look plenty large enough there?
Yes.
Four and five. And lot five, once it comes up off of the county road, the property line will mimic the driveway, correct?
Yes.
What's the distance from driveway to property line?
The new, uh, the new driveway going in?
No, no, the current existing driveway serves in the existing home.
Um.
Lot five seems to mimic that in its shape.
Yes, it's, um. I believe it's fifty feet.
Okay.
I believe it's fifty feet. I'll show the offset on, on the next submission, just so everybody is aware of that.
You didn't see an R here, but I don't know if that was in reference to that or a radius calculation on the, sort of.
Yeah, it's a radius.
Um, so as of right now, this is a conventional subdivision. The board shall determine if a conservation subdivision is required. Um, as Mr. Fusco mentioned, the Orange County driveway permit is required as well as GML two thirty-nine review and the witness soil testing by our office. Um, when I looked at the New York State DEC mapper, there were wetlands on site, it said, um, on the eastern side, I believe. So the applicant should consider submitting, um, the project to the DEC for a parcel AD. Uh, and then for the plan comments, there were a few minor comments, but nothing major. And Jason thinks that it's okay to get a sketch approval if the board's okay with the lot configuration, unless you plan on changing it, like you said earlier.
It would be a minor change, just to lot five.
And that would be to accommodate making the subdivision wholly in Orange County.
Yes.
I think that's a good change. You know, be a daughter, be a little smoother than that one. Everybody comfortable with this layout? Consent of orders that this is good. Swing that line down out of Sullivan. He'll make it better.
Yes, sir. We'll do that. Lena, I'll contact your office. We'll set up soils testing and we'll have a talk about wetlands possibly.
Yeah, we can discuss that.
All right, great.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
This one, skip the soils testing.
About it?
Yeah, I got it. Good night, everybody.
David Gallo, Mongau Briller Solar. It's great to see you all again. Got some minor updates based off, based on the planning board meeting last month. Uh, one of the comments brought up by, by the town engineer, Jason, was about proposing some shrubs in between the proposed screening of trees that we have. So, uh, we have that included on the site plans that we submitted prior to this meeting. And, um, yeah, the other, the other item, which was also brought up in last month's engineering letter, was in regards to the fencing that we're proposing. Um, we were told to look at the, uh, the solar law, the town solar law again. Sent an email to, I believe, you Alex, Jason, and the rest of the town, confirming that the eight-foot-tall galvanized deer fence that we are proposing is in compliance with the town solar code, how we read it. Town code says that shall be enclosed by a fence consistent with NISERTA regulations. Uh, planning board, they require a greater height in fencing depending on individual conditions. Took a look at the NISERTA model solar law that they have. It just says that all mechanical equipment in any structures, components shall be imposed by a seven-foot-high fence with a self-locking gate to prevent unauthorized access. So the fence we are proposing, it's eight feet tall. It will have a self-locking gate to prevent unauthorized access. My last update, really, we were at the zoning board earlier this month. At last month's planning board meeting, you guys wanted us to request them to schedule a public hearing. They had some more questions about the size of the system. They wanted us to provide something more concrete, more physical on paper. Kind of a hypothetical layout if, if this already adhered to the setbacks that the town fires. So we're working on that. Essentially, we're here again, just hoping to schedule a public hearing and just get any public input. Trying to address any concerns. I'm also just here to get any more comments that you guys may have. Just got another town engineer letter, took a quick glance at it. I think the comments are starting to dwindle down as we've been here about four times already. But again, we're all ears and we're, hope it's any comments and questions that we can answer.
There was one question, like two minutes ago, in regards to notifications to the local fire department and contact thereof. I spoke with the chief, he was in contact with David, I've referenced him, you know. Uh, his request at that time, and that was a few meetings ago, was the driveway or egress to the facility be increased to, I believe he had requested twenty-four feet, which I think you mentioned last time it was.
Yes.
And that, I think, was the only thing that was pending with them at that point.
Okay. Yeah, I, was it Brandon? Yeah. I think after that meeting, I followed up with him as well. I think you said that you were gonna try to get hold of him. Um, I didn't get a response from him, but, um.
That was the only thing he said that was, he saw in this from the early onset.
Okay.
As a recommendation of.
I'll have to take a look, but we also extended the access road, that was a comment you guys made as well. Um, I believe he has these plans. I think this was made two iterations ago, but we'll reconfirm, but. Was that the only comment he had on the width of the road?
Um, it might have been the length as well, but I think he felt it was something that he did reach out to you and he talked with the planners that I had shown him that were at a sufficient price to his comments, it was included, so I think it's comfortable.
I'll do it. I can email. I don't think I got a response, but I'll double check.
Queen, I have a couple of items for, that Mr. Stone has to take care of. There's pre-existing items that haven't received permits that need to get permits. And then he's interested in also obtaining a permit for a shed or something, which I don't even know can even happen before this process is finished. But I said that I would ask at the meeting tonight when I spoke with him. But he definitely needs to take care of these other two items that are outstanding. I would believe.
Yeah, that would have to be done prior to any approvals for anything.
Yeah.
And the other permitting for something new would be, I think, totally separate.
And, and he'd have to wait until this goes through?
I don't, I don't believe so. What do you have? Is it purpose to this project?
And he wants to do what?
He wants to possibly do, um, like a shed or something. I don't know. I, you know, he hasn't really given me any kind of plans or anything. He just wanted to know if he could do it.
Do they know about it?
I don't know if they do or not.
Joe, what comments is he looking for? What, what did he do to be shaven down basically?
Well, he put in a pool, in a ground pool and a deck, some, quite a long time ago.
Do you want to provide a response? Do you have any objections to that happening? Interfairs with your project in any way?
So, so am I talking?
Mr. Stone?
I mean, he did want to keep this western side of his land free of any panels. That was a big request since we submitted this application. We really didn't ask exactly why, um, so, I mean, that's news to me and.
But here's the thing, if you don't get your zoning board variance, is that going to affect, like if I okay a build for, in that area? You know what I mean? Like I don't, I don't under.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that we, we probably need to speak to him about.
You definitely should, for sure, yeah.
Is that, have you reached out to him or do you want me to?
Well, I'm gonna reach out to him tomorrow morning. I, he had me, you know, he said, could I ask? And so I'm here asking. So, and.
So are you done, Julie?
Yeah.
Have you taken care of everything without hooking?
Uh, as far as bills?
Yeah.
Uh, no, they're being processed right now. We shouldn't be able to drop them off next week, so. But yes, we are in receipt. Our AP team is aware and we're, we are getting those processed.
So if the ZBA doesn't grant the variances, that section you said they don't want panels and that's not then an option for panels to be put there to make up for what's lost in the.
Yeah, it's a discussion.
Lack of the ZBA's approval.
It's a discussion we'd have to have with the landowner. We did speak with him about a month ago. Uh, just asking him if that would be an option. Of course, compensation was mentioned, but that is something that he seems to be a little open to, but I can't commit to it right now. Just need to have more conversation.
So, do you mind if I ask the question?
Go ahead.
So, according to the ZBA meeting, which I was at, um, if you don't get exactly what you're asking for at the ZBA, which, um, the landowner won't give you anything either, correct? Or no, no?
He's definitely negotiable.
He's negotiable and possibly the ZBA may, may be negotiable, but not a hundred percent.
Yeah, what I took away from that, from the ZBA meeting earlier this month was, uh, there was more concerns about the side yard setback than the rear yard setback.
You're right, a hundred percent.
That was made pretty clear.
Yeah, they did.
So, yeah, we're going back to the drawing table. We're working with our electrical engineer.
You are.
Just to provide something more concrete because they want to see something in hand. Like if this complies with all the setbacks, what do we do to the size? Because the answer that we gave the ZBA, uh, for some reason, just didn't believe it.
You don't know the reason?
Well, we got, I mean, we, we're just relaying the information we got from our engineers and we told the ZBA that. But they want to see something more physical and so we're working on that right now.
Would your electrical engineer be able to come and ZBA meet?
Probably not. No, but I can have an email confirmation stating what he provided, but.
I just thought I'd ask. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so our office submitted the GML review. However, we're still waiting for comments from them. So you guys might have to return in September, um, and as well as to update us on the ZBA process as well. So that was pretty much it, the situation on ZBA.
I think that, uh, public hearing scheduling will be pending your, uh, ZBA outcome. As if there's not a ZBA approval for requests, it's totally gonna change that project and that'll result in new maps, new engineering and, you know, it wouldn't be fair to publicly schedule it and then find out it has to change and you're ill-prepared with the proper information for it, so.
But the ZBA is gonna need a secret approval though. Of this board. You're the lead agency, so the ZBA can't issue a final variance until they have that secret approval.
I don't think.
I also just wanna, like, clarify that the layout that the ZBA is asking for that adheres to the setbacks, it's a hypothetical layout. That's, that's just what they want to see. They want to see what it does to the size, how many panels will be remaining. That's, this is the current layout that we're, that we've submitted and we're rolling with and, uh, and yeah, until, until it changes, we'll resubmit, but we'll cross that bridge if it gets there.
Yeah, I just, in drawing, um, things from the past with applicants, not particularly solvers, may have not a lot of them, but any applicant that may have significant changes to the plans and the maps that we would like to see a rendition of that prior to the scheduling of the public hearing.
Oh, I understand that.
We have the proper information available for the public. That's all I was trying to say.
Right, no, I'm talking about an actual ZBA vote before there's a secret determination.
Okay.
Okay, so, so are you saying that you, you guys wouldn't want to schedule a public hearing if this layout changes, right? But, I mean, there are no plans to change the layout, like, right now.
Mine, that's understandable, right now, but if the. But if the variances are not granted, then you can't have that same plan and have that same plan approved if the Z B A doesn't allow for that. If they deny your application, then, you know, to me, you're back to square one with starting a new plan for that particular space.
I understand. I mean, I know the planning board has to schedule a public hearing at some point and, I mean, ideally, we would like to do that sooner just to get more public input, get more comments, just so we can fine tune this layout. I mean, I'm sure we're gonna have to address more comments at that point. Uh, it's kind of the whole idea as far as just trying to schedule a public hearing tonight, but. Totally understand, we gotta go back to the Z B A, figure that out first. Yeah. So we were told last month, Z B A needs to have the public hearing first before this public hearing can take place. So I guess that's what it stands.
It doesn't really matter, I don't think.
Can I just ask something? Cause I'm with David on some of this stuff. So is he asked to go back to the Z B A and get their opinion, but no vote?
Well, they can't vote without a secret determination. That has to be by this board. I don't see a problem if this board wants to hold a public hearing to get public input, like they're saying. I don't see a problem as long as everyone understands that there's gotta be a consent. There's not gonna be a final vote, cause obviously this board can't take a final vote until the Z B A grants a variance. And there'd have to be a consent that everybody understands that.
An option could be that you guys could hold a public hearing but keep it open or schedule another one as well.
Well, there would be a question, can we schedule another public hearing after that?
Right, they'd have to give a consent right now to do that.
Well, schedule another public hearing or extend the one that you might open?
Extend it.
Yes.
Isn't there a time limit on the public hearing? You can all leave it open for so long, right?
And that's, that's why I'm using the word consent.
Mr. Smith, I, I'm sort of clarifying. We're saying they can either do it as an extension or a second one. My position is I'd rather have a second public hearing.
It's up to you.
Because the extension, if we're gonna lose things.
As long as they consent to whatever's doing, and nobody raises a question, oh, you had ninety days to do this and you didn't do it and therefore, you know, you're, you're violation of the law. We can't do that because everybody, everybody understands, Z B A has to make its vote before this board can take a final vote. The Z B A can't vote until this board issues a secret determination. And hearing for the public would probably help this board in making a secret determination.
So, so, can I ask if I have the sequence?
So Alex, if, if they have a public hearing and they close it and they get comments in from the public and then they decide to have a second public hearing, do you send notifications out again on the second public hearing?
Well, they may have to do that, yes.
Okay, alright.
I don't think they're.
Means on them?
Yeah, I don't think they're.
The cost is on them, not anybody else. They have to realize that.
Right.
We do.
Last part of the word.
So, so would the sequence be David goes back to the Z B A to get not a vote, but their, you know, what they would vote?
Well, I don't think the Z B A is gonna do that.
I don't think they are either, so what, so I'm gonna catch twenty-two of what to do.
And that's why I'm saying, get a, start a public hearing here, have this board get enough information that it can make a secret determination. Then go back to the Z B A for their vote, actual vote. And, but again, there has to be a consent and understanding that this board will need more time after that to finish the public hearing, if necessary, to have another one. Finish, but finish the public hearing and this, this board can take a final vote. And they don't realize that in the middle of this, you may, if you'd have to change your plans, that would, you know, require more, more hearings anyway. But if you don't have to change your plans, that's the way I see it. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Okay. So, and take a motion that we schedule a public hearing for next month, September seventeenth. It'll be the second public hearing on the agenda that evening.
You wanna put a second public hearing down now?
No, we, this will be the second public hearing. There's already one scheduled for the seventeenth.
Oh, so you're making a motion for a public hearing for next month?
A public hearing for seventeenth, for next month, seventeenth of September. And then we schedule.
Good daddy.
Good, yeah, good daddy is a continuation first next month. And this will be the second one. With the, with the understanding of the applicant then, that public hearing may be closed or, and if so, would require then a second subsequent public hearing prior to a project approval.
Understood.
Non-motion, public motion. John, thank you. David, a second, thank you. Those in favor? Any? Any opposed? That's Carrie, thank you. I will try to keep it rolling for you.
Appreciate it. See you guys soon.
Alright, so David, do you want me to email all the information to you?
Yeah, that'd be good. I guess we could, we could talk, oh, like after this, but would you like us to draft the notice?
No.
You guys take it.
We do the notice.
Okay.
Draft it, it goes in the Timeshare Record Newspaper, and I get the joiners from the S. Okay, so I will return the note, look at the joiners, and I will send it to you and with the insurance, you know, what we have to get.
Okay. Yeah, I think I saw online that the planning board, its own board, public hearing likes procedures.
I don't know.
You kinda listened to it?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Saw a copy, so.
Oh, hi.
But, yeah. We'll have to check. We'll have to check real soon.
I have the phone.
I know.
Thank you.
Will you be the second public hearing? Good dad will be.
Yeah, the hearing.
Okay, alright. Sounds good. Yeah, Shadi Haller, I mean, we're just waiting now because there were those comments from the D E C. So now we're waiting for that to get cleared up. And then I think I'm waiting for Kevin to get back with me the final figures for the entire project. Cause he only gave.
Oh, with the freaking dissipation.
You know, this is the entire project.
What, what?
Uh, because we determined whether or not you owe us money.
For, for what, the mortgage?
Yeah.
Oh, I got it, they, they called them.
Assume the public. David, make the motion second please.
Yeah, that's why, cause we just determined.
Building permit.
Closet, yes. Exactly.